This regular meeting of the city council will now come to order. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Sorry, let's do that on, Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor De La Sola.
Here.
Counselor De Florio.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Sani. Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
And President De Perro.
Here.
Eleven members present.
We already slotted the flag earlier this evening. I'll entertain a motion to open public participation. Counselor McGlaughlin.
On that motion, can we extend public participation by five minutes? We normally have 10 minutes. I think it's under our rules, right? We're allowed to suspend it. Suspend it to allow for...
Are we allowed to do so, Mr. Clerk?
It doesn't say that you can't suspend it, so then I would say that you could suspend the rule.
So make a motion that we suspend the rule and allow five minutes extra of public participation this evening.
I'd second that.
Motion was made and seconded to add five minutes to public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I have five speakers, so that being said, there will be three minutes for each speaker.
Okay. Who is the first speaker?
And the first speaker would be Rixie. I don't know if I'm saying this right. I can't read the name. I'm sorry.
Fuentes.
Is that an L? Fuentes?
Fuentes.
Ms. Fuentes?
Okay, so I'll do...
We'll keep her on the list.
Arabelo?
Better call him next.
So I'm going to start by introducing myself. My name is Elias. I am in the ninth grade. I've been going to Saint Anthony's Church here in Everett for about seven years now. I have an older sibling attending high school and two younger siblings that are currently in middle school and elementary. My parents work in custodial services at Harvard University. The current situation in El Salvador is very dangerous and has worsened over the past few years. The same goes for many other countries that are underdeveloped. Someone very important to me and my family was sadly shot by some gang members in El Salvador.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you just speak a little louder? I'm sorry, buddy. Thank you.
He was my grandfather. Two years later, my uncle was shot by another group of gang members, but he survived. The temporary protected status allows immigrants to seek safety and escape from the horrors that they were living. Not only does it allow for them to create a better future for themselves and their family, but they actively participate in the government and the economy of the country. My parents mean everything to me, so does my family. I want to accomplish the dream of a better future. Many of us cannot achieve because of the obstacles that are put in our way. I wish to be an architect, and the termination of the TPS will affect my future dreams negatively. I ask to possibly help us as immigrants, along with the families that are put in risk. Thank you very much for support.
Thank you.
And next speaker will be Senator Saldo Domenico.
Mr. President, members of the committee. Thank you very much for having me up here tonight. I knew what I was going to say, but then I saw that young man speaking earlier. And I have two boys of my own, as you all know. Eleven and 12 years old, and we all have children, grandchildren, and we all have nephews and nieces. And what these families are going through right now in their personal lives, we should never have to go through. The fear of having your family be broken up, the fear of not knowing what you're going to be doing tomorrow, the fear of having someone knock on your door, the fear of being told you cannot no longer stay in a community that you know you've been raised in, you work in, you've established yourself in, and now you've been told you can't stay here any longer. And as you heard, going back to a situation that is not only dangerous, but you're risking your life. And I know that this community is a welcoming community. The city of Everett has done so much for so many people throughout the generations. All in the groups coming from all over the world. And I just want to voice my support, my steadfast support, for the folks that are going through this in DACA and TPS. I'm going down to Washington DC on Thursday and Friday of this week and speaking personally with Homeland Security and the Secretary of State's office with some of my colleagues in the Senate. And we're going to convey to them that the people of Massachusetts support TPS, support DACA. And we have to fix this. We know this is a federal issue. This has to be addressed. These families can no longer live in fear. And it's affecting the children of our community, the seniors of our community, people that know no other life but their life here in the city of Everett, in the state of Massachusetts. And what they're going through, and as you saw, it takes courage for a young man to stand up, sit up here in front of an elective body. And in most countries, they can't do that. And they know what the ramifications would be if they spoke against the government or even tried to express their own opinion in front of a government forum. And the beauty of this country and this community is that we don't have to worry about that. And I am with them 1,000 percent. And I know the several councillors are as well. And we had a rally outside, and Counselor McGlaughlin was down there as well. And I know many in the council that are sitting here before me and my private conversations with you, I know you support this as well. This is the right thing to do for our families in our community. And we have to stand up and at least publicly say we want to push back and make sure our families feel safe in the city of Everett. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laura Rotolo.
Thank you very much. And the first speaker is back. The first speaker, she's...
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Laura Rotolo. I am an attorney with the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts. And I'm very happy to be here tonight. Thank you for your invitation to speak. I also want to speak about DACA and TPS and how it's affecting your residents here in Everett. And just to give a little bit of background, DACA, which stands for Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, was created to support young people who came here, who were brought here as children, and have lived a life as American as everyone else around them. These dreamers, there's at least 200 of which La Comunidad, the agency right across the street, services here in Everett. So we don't know the full extent of the number, but at the very least, there are 200 people who have now lost their DACA. And TPS was created as a stopgap measure 30 years ago to benefit people who could not return to their countries because of tragic circumstances. And we know that of those people, about 450 are being serviced by La Comunidad right across the street. So the number will certainly be larger here in Everett. Just to be clear, we now know that TPS has been taken away from some countries and others are still in limbo, and we are expecting a negative decision. The situation in these countries has not changed overnight. TPS has existed for 30 years, and it has been renewed by the Obama administration, by the Clinton administration, by the Bush administration, with bipartisan support. It is not that the situation in these countries suddenly got better. In Honduras, we know Honduras is the murder capital of our hemisphere. More murders happen in Honduras than anywhere else. And we know that sending people back to these countries is a death sentence for many of them. So the question is, what can a city council do? Well, in Everett, you know you have a lot of people here who will be suffering, and it's very important for them to see their local leaders stand up, take a stand, and say, "We will protect you to the best of our ability. We may not be able to control what the federal government does, but at the very least, our police won't collaborate with ICE if asked when people have lost their TPS status or their DACA." And we are also asking for you to consider a special hearing, a special meeting, to discuss these issues more further and more in depth with community members. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I believe Rixie is back.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Rixie Fuentes. I am currently in high school. I am 16 years old. I play soccer. I also coach soccer. And I am very glad that I go to Everett High School. It's a really good school. But today I'm here to plead before you about TPS, Temporary Protected Status. A status that protects many of our citizens here in Everett as well across the country. As we all know, it's soon ending according to Trump's administration. And I believe that if we all work together, as my fellow before said, that it has been renewed for 30 years, so why can it not be renewed again? We know that it helps many citizens, and it would be glad and appreciated by many if we could work together and renew it again. And we can tell Trump as a community and as a state that we can work together and make it better. My family is also undocumented, and many of them benefit from TPS. And they're all worried about soon ending. I am Honduran, and it's soon ending for them. Well, it's actually practically ended. And I have my trust, and I believe I have your support. Thank you very much for your time. God bless.
The next speaker and the final speaker was Chief Steve Maisy.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Maisy, Police Chief of the City of Everett. I did not know this issue was on the agenda, but I'm here to speak about benches in a moment. But I've been engaged personally with a lot of outreach and engagement with the immigrant community over the years. And this TPS DACA issue is something that has some pretty strong consequences for people living here in terms of driver's licenses being not renewable and work papers pulled, which could cause us some problems. But I would strongly encourage the body to at least engage Congress to work towards a solution for this. Because these issues, it's really, it's an issue for Washington, but we feel the effects of it very strongly at this local level. So I wanted to at least touch base on that. And then I wanted to comment on park benches, the downtown area. You know, we were experiencing some issues, and we wanted to at least experiment with taking some of the benches out. The reason we did it is we have some people who are engaging in activities that we don't want them to engage in. And anytime you put out benches in large volume, these types of problems happen in urban areas. You have some activity that you don't want. So I would just encourage you to at least give it some time. We are going into the winter months. People are not using them as much at this time of year to begin with. But it is an issue that we want to see how it goes next year into the warmer weather and to see what effects and changes that may take place by removing them. They were not all removed. And, you know, talking with the mayor and some of the residents and businesses down there, we felt it was in the best interest to take them out for a short period of time and see how that goes. Okay?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made and seconded to close public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes have it.
Mr. President, if you could please suspend the rule and take item number two.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item two. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes have it. Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is an order offered by Counselor Anthony De Perro as president. Subject to confirmation by the city council, I hereby appoint Robert Goodwin, Juan Ald Alonso, and Sean Fitzpatrick as patrolmen in the Everett Police Department.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor De La Sola.
Yes.
Counselor De Florio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
President De Perro.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Please step forward. If anyone wants to get closer to take photos, please feel free to do so. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, folks, this meeting will now reconvene.
Mr. Chairman, if we could please suspend the rules and take item number 11.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number 11. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes have it. Excuse me, folks. Please quiet down. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Rosa De Florio that the President of the City Council consider establishing an immigrant dialogue committee just for immigrants.
Mr. Chairman, there's two changes I'd like to make on this. Committee just for immigrants, please strike that out. I'd like to add Counselor Cynthia Sani on the piece. And what I'm trying to do with this is I'd like to have a dialogue with the immigrant community on issues that they have, not just the DACA and the TPS, because this is getting out of control. Unfortunately, it is a federal issue, and the federal is playing the political football, as far as I'm concerned. So my recommendation would be, if it's okay with the councillors, is to have the city clerk draft a letter and send it to our delegates, telling them enough is enough, because it's not fear that these immigrants have to be afraid to live in our city. We're just not that type of a city. We're a very given city, and we help everybody. So the dialogue, what I would like to do is meet once a month on a Thursday when City Hall is already opened. If you would please allow us to have the back room where we can sit around a table and talk about any issue and any problems, because no citizens in the city of Everett should ever be afraid to live in our city. So what I would do is, we would have this open dialogue, and whatever issues or problems that they're facing, anything that's important, I would bring, everything is important, obviously, but whatever we can't resolve in the back room as a dialogue, I would bring it out to the council with the council's help. And any of the councillors are welcome to come. We'll have it a set day on a Thursday where City Hall is open from 6:00 to 8:00. Maybe the third Thursday of the month, it will be an ongoing issue. And whatever problems there are, we can try to resolve them to the best of our ability. So and as far as the DACA goes or the TPS, I'm definitely in favor of this. And like I said, I would recommend that hopefully we can refer it to the city clerk's office, where he could draft a letter for us and send it to our delegates and tell Washington, "Enough is enough. We're not putting up with this anymore." For them to do their job and stop playing the political football. Thank you.
Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. President. And to add her to it, yes, okay.
Motion was made and seconded. I do have the amendments for the clerk and to refer to the clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it.
Please suspend the rules and take item number four.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it.
Item number four is an order offered by Counselor Anthony De Perro as president that the sum of $12.5 million be transferred from the Community Mitigation Stabilization Fund to reduce the fiscal year 2018 tax levy.
Mr. President, do you...
Counselor, first, I have a letter from the mayor that I'm going to read that he sent to the city council.
But you redeem this to be, what's the word I want to say? Routine?
Because we did allocate money from the same fund last year, I'm going to rule it as routine.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to read the letter before any other questions or comments. Dear Mr. President and members of the council, I am pleased to introduce tonight a proposal to transfer $12.5 million from the Community Mitigation Stabilization Fund to reduce the fiscal year 2018 tax levy. If approved, this transfer will save money for the homeowners and business owners of Everett, and I urge your acceptance of this proposal on behalf of the community. As you know, the city of Everett is undergoing a transformational period of growth and redevelopment. We are experiencing tremendous jumps in property values at a percentage rate amongst the highest in the state. In particular, I am so pleased that our homeowners are seeing this type of increase in value. For many of us, our home is our primary investment. At the same time, I am sensitive to the corresponding increase in property tax that comes with an increase in home value. I particularly recognize the need to mitigate the tax burden on homeowners, now so that the people of this city, many of whom have lived here for decades and raised families here, can stay in their homes and continue their investment in our neighborhoods and civic life. civic life. This $12.5 million tax relief proposal will help offset tax bills for both residents and business owners. The upcoming tax rate hearing process will be the appropriate opportunity to discuss the specifics of the rate, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce this proposal in advance. This funding is part of the host community agreement with Wynn, and I am pleased that the project will directly benefit residents in this way even before opening. The Wynn Resort alone, amongst other developments, will create a large municipal revenue stream when it becomes operational in June of 2019, as outlined in our host community agreement. I believe that we are on steady financial ground and can responsibly use this money to offset the tax levy at this time. Let me be clear, these next two fiscal years represent a transition, a time before major developments come online and bring in truly significant amounts of revenue. We are uniquely positioned as a city to invest those significant new revenues into the components that will make us a tremendous place to live or visit. Modernized workforce housing, and housing that is affordable for seniors, a cutting-edge transportation system that will facilitate mobile, mobility and economic growth, recreational facilities that can be enjoyed by young and older alike to promote community health, and so much more. While future revenues will be dedicated to transformational projects such as these, I understand how important it is to provide a measure of tax relief to our residents and business owners now. Thank you very much for your consideration, I look forward to continuing to work together to protect the taxpayer of Everett. Sincerely, Carlo Di Maria, Mayor. Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is such great news for our community. Development is paying off for the taxpayers, the homeowners, and the businessmen in this community. And I think the mayor, in that letter, has expressed the hope that Everett will once again be the lowest taxes, hopefully, when we had quite a bit of industry here, now we have quality businesses coming here. Yeah, it's a new future for our community, and there's the mayor, I don't like using the word "promise," but it said that he would apply some of these funds to the tax rate, he has followed through with that pledge. And I think that the taxpayers of this community are very grateful, as you could see last Tuesday, in the election results, this is a great opportunity for the city, and I can see this becoming a yearly, hopefully a yearly expenditure to reduce our taxes. So with that in mind, I look forward to a great future for this city, to once again be the lowest taxes in the state. Thank you.
Fable action on the order.
Second.
On the motion, Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President, I echo the sentiments of Counselor Matusky, I think this is a great piece. My only question, maybe for somebody, is, is there a ratio that this 12.5 gets broken down, commercial versus residential?
That can be discussed at the tax rate hearing process, which is in a few weeks.
Okay, so this just goes into, gets put aside, and then we figure out how to divide it up at that point, is that how this works?
Yes.
Okay, no, this is a great piece, I applaud the mayor and the administration for putting it forward, I just was wondering the ratio portion, thank you.
Chairman, could we call for the question, please?
Mr. President, just to, just to be safe, just so I think we're safe, I just want to move the suspend rule 13, just in case.
Motion was made for favorable action with the suspension of rule 13, and was seconded, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delisola?
Yes.
Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
President De Perro?
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
The order has passed.
Could we please suspend the rules and take item number five?
Motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number five, Mr. President, is a petition for a new mechanical license from LA Auto Repair at 86B Elm Street.
Accept the committee report, place on file, and favorable action on the order.
Motion was made and seconded to accept the committee report, place on file, and for favorable action, please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delisola?
Yes.
Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
President De Perro?
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Petition has passed.
Please suspend the rules and take item number three.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item three, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, item three.
Item number three is an order offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as President, to authorize a city building revolving fund. This fund will be here to utilize the money received from city building rental fees and donations for the purpose of funding related maintenance, related to maintenance of city buildings. Examples of expenditures include, but are not limited to, general maintenance, supplies, repairs, capital equipment, and improvements.
I just want to explain to the members that, you know, we, as we all know, we voted on this recently, the difference in this piece is, there was a cap at $200,000, and it was a concern to some councilors, that cap is now at $100,000, and overtime is not included in this. So this was debated for week after week, and that was two of the main issues, so this really should just be voted yes or no tonight.
Fable action on the order.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
No.
Counselor Delisola?
Yes.
Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
And President De Perro?
Yes.
Nine yays, two, sorry, nine yays, two nays.
The order has passed.
Refer back to the regular order of business.
Item number one.
Item number one is an order offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as President, that the amount of $6,298,000 be appropriated by borrowing to pay cost of the following capital project, MWRA water main replacements. This amount will be borrowed from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority for a term of 10 years with a principal payment of 200, of $629,800 per year.
Whereas money has been borrowed in the past from the MWRA, and this is a zero-interest loan, I am gonna rule this routine as well.
If we could please suspend rule 13 and favorable action on the other.
Motion made and seconded to suspend rule 13 and favorable action, Counselor Capone?
If I may, thank you, Mr. President, through you to our clerk, this is part of capital improvement that we've already approved, correct?
Correct, and, just so you know, we've, we've done this in the past, I just signed off on loans recently, as clerk, I have to do that to say that you voted on it, so this is routine and something that we have done.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. President, you're welcome, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delisola?
Yes.
Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
And President De Perro?
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed, item six.
Item number six is, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Stephen Seminelli to request the mayor's chief of staff appear at this council meeting with an update on former Counselor Joseph R. King's dedication date. We do have the chief of staff in the audience?
Forrest, please. Is there a motion made and seconded to invite Mr. O'Donnell before us, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell.
Good evening, all. Yes, we do, we are gonna schedule a formal dedication for former Counselor King in the warmer weather in the springtime. We do have a ribbon bench with a plaque that already exists on the park, but we want to do a formal ceremony, we just feel that, given the weather right now, it wouldn't be as well-attended as it deserves.
Excuse customary thanks. Motion made and seconded to excuse Mr. O'Donnell with a customary thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Refer back.
On behalf of-
Counselor Matusky?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of Counselor Seminelli, he would like to thank Chief of Staff O'Donnell and the mayor's office for pushing this request forward, and refer it to the mayor's office.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the mayor's office, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item seven.
Item number seven, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Stephen Seminelli to have the Director of Parking Permits research the two-week and one-month parking permits to see if they are being abused with a request for a written report back to the council for this meeting. I do not, I'm sorry.
Counselor Matusky?
I didn't, from him?
Counselor Seminelli, Mr. President, is requesting to lay this on the table for more time until Mr. O'Donnell can get some further information. And I'd just like to mention, I think all the councilmen wanted to be added to this piece, and it's not on here, it doesn't appear, so that should say the entire city council-
Okay, we will fix that.
Chiefs, it doesn't say it on the calendar here, but, you know, and if I may, on my own behalf, we brought it up at the last meeting, and as I traveled the city throughout the last few weeks, I've heard some horror stories where some homes have 10 permits for one house, or one apartment, maybe, and some over there. I'd like to know, and this is true, Mr. O'Donnell, I know he's in the chambers, you know, anything over the ordinary, which would be six, I think, for a household, a three-family house could technically have, I don't know how many permits, but if that's the case, there's some homes that have 20 permits, and they're overcrowding the streets, especially Irving and Vine Street, and Chestnut Street, I was over there, there was an issue. People want to know, you know, what's, where does it stop?
Yes.
Where does it stop? And it has, you have to have a limit, and this may already be in effect, I don't know, but this is what I want to know, where does it stop? And the same thing with a visitor's pass, how many visitor's passes you can have to one residence? I think that's all in the same umbrella, maybe? So we'd like that kind of information, if there's somebody abusing it, I'm sure the red flags go up downstairs, but we need to really consider, especially with the winter months and parking is limited, with the snow and so forth, people are taking advantage like they do. So, and then on top of that, you've got the people with business vehicles getting permits. So, you know, these things have to be addressed, so we'll wait until the, we'll refer this to the chief of staff, and let him get some information for us at his, maybe, first meeting in December? Thank you, Mr. President.
First motion was to add the entire body, was it seconded?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that, in order to get a visitor's pass, every landlord has to sign to make sure, because I believe that a lot of absentee landlords that don't live here, they don't even know how many tenants are living there. So in order for them to come up and get a permit for parking, I believe they should have a form where the landlord has to sign for it. So maybe that would be something that we should look into.
Okay. Counselor Hanlon? Okay. Was it seconded?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded to postpone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item eight.
Item number eight, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Fred Capone that the administration consider replacing benches in Everett Square near the library at the request of Everett's, Everett residents in the area. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the clerk, do we have any written communication? Or, is that, I gave an ELO, are they giving the right?
Yeah, no, the-
You can have the chief of staff?
That's why, no, there's nothing here, the-
Okay, if we could please have the chief of staff.
I think that's why the chief was up.
Okay.
Prior. Yeah, they would like you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Chief of Staff.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
I still have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, if I may, through Chief of Staff, I know we've spoken, and the chief had spoke, Chief Maisy had spoken earlier, we understand why benches were temporarily relocated. The spirit of the piece is that some of the residents were asking about when we might be getting them back, they wanted something more of a timeframe. I've explained to them that, I think that there's actually an upgrade in the benches that's anticipated, but do you have a general idea, it sounds like maybe the warmer months will come back in at that, at that point?
I, I would say that's a safer assumption, you know, it could perhaps be sooner, I mean, but, you know, the chief wants though, just a little bit more time, as he expressed, to kind of see what the enforcement issues, if they continue, they seem to minimize, but sometimes, as we all know, a lot of these enforcement issues go in peaks and valleys, you know, they really level off when there's a stronger presence, and then, you know, as we see that there's not a stronger presence needed, and we put our resources elsewhere, then sometimes there's a little spike, so what we're trying to work to do is to not have that spike, kind of neutralize it, you know, ideally once and for all, but, you know, we'll be, you know, certainly we'll be getting back to the primetime sitting area, you know, that it has been in the past going forward.
Sure, and I, and I fully understand that, and the piece was put on at the request of the residents, just so they can have a better understanding of a timeframe, so we are coming into the winter months, as Chief Maisy had said, so when we get to the warmer months, I can't see many people being out there in the cold on the bench, get to the warmer months, hopefully, the efforts have been implemented in the square will make it such that the residents can take advantage of benches again, so.
Yes, that's right.
I appreciate, I appreciate you looking into that, thank you very much.
All right.
I have no other questions.
I just, one question. I also received some phone calls from residents, as Counselor Capone did regarding this item. My question too is, Mr. O'Donnell, will they put the same benches back that were existing, or different benches? Because I know if you put a divider in a bench, it becomes less desirable for hanging around purposes. So, will they put back the benches that they took out, or will they replace them with a different bench style, which has that, sort of that divider? I know we had to replace other benches throughout the city, that was just a bench seat, and put in these benches that had the divider in them.
No, as the time goes on, Counsel, I'm sure we'll discuss all options, and maybe even look to see what other cities have done, which, which kind of would, again, help us neutralize the problem once and for all, so whatever our best option is to make it welcoming for, for the residents that-
I think-
-properly take advantage of it, we're open to.
Perfect, I think, put in the benches that has the divider in them, makes it less desirable for gathering purposes, but more friendly usable, and some of the residents had called me and asked me the same questions they asked Counsel Capone, so that's great, I want to thank Counsel for putting it forward, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
I just have one, and it's to the sponsor, they may want to actually increase the lighting down in that area, so that's, that's probably one of the reasons they need to do that, so that they may be able to get a couple of benches back in there, just so that we can have our police actually know what's going on in there, so, just as a suggestion, thank you, ma'am.
I just, we'll relay that to the chief of staff, increased lighting might, might help, so to the extent we can look at that, that'd be great.
Oh, we'll, we'll take into consideration and entertain any options that are gonna help make it a more welcoming place for, for the citizens who want to take the proper advantage of what it's intended for.
Excuse customary thanks. Further matter back to sponsor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number nine is a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony De Perro to request the Department of Planning and Development to explore the idea of a lighting improvement plan, a program similar to the sign and awning program, program for the businesses/stor fronts to encourage more public lighting.
Counselor De Perro?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This item is just something simple, I was driving down Elm Street one evening, and I noticed how dark some of the areas are, where there's mixed use between commercial and residential space, and I know community development has programs to help businesses get awnings, so I figured we can refer this to planning and development, and perhaps they can look into coming up with a program that encourages businesses, where they help them pay for lighting, and encourages more public lighting, lights up the streets, only good things can come out of that, so I would ask that this gets referred to planning and development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, you'll refer to planning and development.
Item number 10 is a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony De Perro to request that Mr. J. Monti, Transportation Director, explore possible speed-detering ideas in the Everett, in the area of Abbott and Freeman Ave at the request of residents.
Counselor De Perro?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, another resolution, I was in that neighborhood, and several neighbors had complained that people just, just fly around that bend, and that, you know, a street like that, you should go no more than 15, 20 miles an hour, and they just fly up and down like it's a racetrack, so I don't know, maybe if Mr. Monti explores the idea of temporary speed bumps, or even a raised crosswalk, something to slow the car- a raised crosswalk, something to slow the cars down, so I would ask that this also gets referred to that department.
So we have a motion to refer this to Mr. J. Monti?
Second.
All in, and I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you have referred item number 10 to Mr. J. Monti.
Before there was a motion to adjourn, this is a special day in the chamber. It's Councilor McGlaughlin's birthday, so I'm going to ask him to step forward. I do have a citation for him. Please come on up, Counselor.
He's wicked in point.
Caroline did this, not me.
We know.
Who is the president?
So the citation says, "Be it hereby known to all, the Everett City Council and his honor the mayor hereby offer sincerest appreciation to Counselor Michael McGlaughlin in recognition of the happy and memorable occasion of your 32nd birthday with all of us. The entire city government extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and